Right. Good. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order this regularly scheduled Brunswick County Board of Elections meeting April the 18th and with that we'll stand have a pledge of allegiance.
I like it.
Very good, thank you. Everybody's had opportunity to see the agenda electronically and here today any questions, changes to the agenda? If not, a motion to approve the agenda, motion Mr. Smith, all in favor, I.
I.
You've got a copy of the minutes from the March 21st regularly scheduled meeting. We've received those earlier both electronically and here today. Any changes, corrections or to the minutes of March 21st, motion to approve the minutes of March 21st regular scheduled meeting? So I got a motion, any further discussion or not, all in favor, much as you want to say an I.
I.
At this time, we'll have an opportunity for public comments. I think we've got a little sign up sheet and what we'll do is we will call you in order of how you signed up. And what I'll try to do is who signed up and then I'll try to get the next person in line to be close to that, so they can step right on up to the microphone after the first person that the previous person speaks. I guess you can hear me.
I would just before we open it up for public comments. When you come up to the podium, just be mindful that there are two microphones. One is so that the people in this room can hear you and the other is so that the people watching on Zoom can hear you, so they're both important. And so just a reminder for all of us as we speak, we make sure that both of those microphones are in use so that those virtual folks can hear what's going on.
Yes, thank you very much. And with that, we'd like for you to we'd like for you to take three to five minutes to speak, we're not going to put a timer on it or whatever. If you want to speak for 20 or 30 minutes and lose your audience in this board, that's perfectly fine. But if you want to be effective, three to five minutes is probably a good length of time. And anything else with that, we'll call Mrs. Barbara Burrell and Mr. Tom Russell, can you be staged up, ready to go next? Okay.
Thank you, Barb.
How do I make sure everything's working?
Pop that mic.
Pardon me?
Pop that mic, just touch it with your hand. You're working.
Okay, you're good. Oh, okay. Well, I'm here to speak about the involvement of the Board of Elections with the National Alliance for Excellence for Election Excellence. So and I'm Barbara Burrell and I'm vice. No. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm voter services chair for the League Women Voters, so I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters. And the League of Women Voters is a nonprofit, nonpartisan political organization in the United States founded founded in 1920. Its ongoing major activities include registering voters, providing voter information and advocating for voter rights. From that perspective, League of Women Voters of the Lower Cape Fear Representatives are here today to advocate in support of the Brunswick County Board of Elections' initial acceptance acceptance of an offer to participate in the and has continued participation in the Alliance of Election Excellence Program. As a Brunswick County press release on November 11th, 2022 stated, being named to the program is, and I quote, "recognition that Brunswick County is committed to leadership, to committed to leadership in election administration and looking to develop even more resilient, trustworthy and voter-centric election administration practices." Involvement in this program has involved Board of Election activities solely concerned with the administration functions of the office, not counting or approving ballots or efforts concerning who can vote. Sarah last month, Sarah listed the activities of her office has undertaken with the expert assistance of the Alliance in working with other boards involved in this program. These actions include the development of a pocket voter guide, which many of you probably have seen, a streamlined absentee voter return envelope, an informative guest editorial gearing up for the November election, I have a picture of that here if anybody wants to read it. And a Brunswick County Standards of Conduct poster used in training sessions with coworkers. The board also obtained the ability to fund temporary employees to facilitate absentee ballots, which quote increased exponentially in 2020. The board also obtained the ability to fund temporary employees. Sorry, I just read that. Let me also note statements by Sarah, I hope you don't mind me quoting you, and board officials that are regarding the positive aspects of participation in this program. First, I quote Sarah, quote, "Participation provides just the opportunity to network with other local election administrators just to talk about the administrative ways that we do things. We don't get much opportunity for that kind of interaction with people that do the job we do." And secondly, she has said, "Having access to this network and being able to share ideas with other election professionals will bring best practices in election administration directly to Brunswick County." And I'd also like to quote statements by two board officials, their recent board members. First, I'd like to quote Board Chairman Mr. Williamson, don't mind that, quote, "The partnership was more aimed at streamlining election processes and making them more understandable for voters." Second, Board Member Mr. Pelton noted in the February meeting after Sarah described her and her staff's first meeting with other election officials in the Alliance Excellence Program, quote, "There are a few folks in the Republican side of political values who were concerned by Sarah's, Melissa's and Adrienne's involvement with the non-government agencies and some of their concerns." Go back to Mr. Zuckerberg and 2020 election activities. These concerns came up at our last Republican Executive Committee and I spoke to the entire Republican Committee and essentially told them what Sarah has just said. We are talking about what we are talking about here are the administrative functions, not balloting or voting. Then finally, just to comment on Mr. Williams, Chair of the Board of Commission and his resolution to strongly encourage the Board of Education, Board of Elections to terminate its membership of the Alliance states. He states that, quote, "Controversy," and I highlight that word, "has arisen over the Board of Elections memberships in the Alliance." However, in a Port City Daily News story, he is quoted as stating that, quote, "When he has received only, quote, 'a few complaints from constituents,' he learned he learned that this may be an issue from one state legislator and one elections lawyer. There is nothing in the Commissioner's resolution or discussion of it, as I understand it, as I'm discussing the Board of Elections' involvement with the Board Director, they have not talked to the Board Director or noting the outcomes that I have stated here. Therefore, I ask as a representative of the League Women Voters that the Board of Elections strongly supports staff's involvement in the Alliance for Election Excellence. Don't throw away the good opportunity that has been presented to your office, thank you."
Thank you, Barbara, Tom, Mr. Russell. Just quickly, yeah. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tom Russell and I come before you today neither as a Republican nor a Democrat. There's an old saying, it's easy to win a race when you're the only one who knows it's begun. Clearly, while under the radar, there's a race being run with a finish line of November 2024. It's being run covertly by a one-horse entry. According to Hayden Ludwing of the Voter Participation Center, one of our nation's best-kept secrets are how political, one political party is using a massive weaponization of America's nonprofit charities to supercharge voter participation in key states to tip elections in their favor. Ensuring people can vote, proclaimed as saving democracy, sounds great, perhaps even admirable. But in execution, it is not about spreading democracy. It's about seizing permanent control of governance. Most all will agree that elections should be transparent and accountable to the people. No matter what they claim to be, these nonprofits who officially declare themselves nonpartisan are nothing more than a money fueled scheme to push liberal voting policies and influence election administration in key states. Nobody should be able to manipulate the democratic process for partisan gain, no one. According to liberal journalist Sasha Eisenberg in her book, even though the nonprofit Voter Participation Center was officially nonpartisan for tax purposes, there was no secret internally that the goal of this efforts was to generate new votes for Democrats. These nonprofits have been engaged in this race for many elections and results have caused election confusion, delays, results and to create uncertainty in our election systems. In a recent interview in the Port City Daily, our local Democrat Party stated that the resolution approved by our county commissioners was, quote, "based on unproven and false promises of political totem. Never mind, there's no proof of corruption or fraud in our elections." There's plenty of documented cases across the country, even in North Carolina, even here in Brunswick County. I have, for your reading pleasure, a small sample of nonprofit influence and voter fraud. It's pretty easy to find if you just look for it. These nonprofits are neither open or transparent. When some concerned municipalities became concerned about the intentions of the Center for Tech and Civic Life, they asked the nonprofit to provide a copy of the group's annual report and conflict of interest policy. The nonprofit declined the request despite publishing on their website that such information is available upon public request. According to Ned Jones, the Deputy Director of the Election Integrity Network, "The goal of the Alliance is to infiltrate 6,000 election offices and affect how they run elections. This membership means turning over data. Infiltration will come back via teaching and coaching from the Alliance. Improvement plans and best practices that will skew to the left, like proposing polling in college campuses that fit their political ideology and demographic, but not in retirement homes or military bases that do not. According to Jones, the Alliance is all about normalizing mail-in voting, drop boxes and no voter ID. Most importantly, I say this with emphasis. Jones states that membership in the Alliance is more damaging than the acceptance of their grant funding. According to Jason Sneed, Executive Director of Honest Elections Project, "It's an attempt to burrow into the very core of election offices and influence the way they think and operate at a very granular level." Brunswick participation in these nonprofits is extremely troubling. I am certain that our director is operating with honorable intentions, but my fear is that she's being manipulated by an organization that has less than honorable intentions. She has openly admitted using Alliance election tools and relied on their penmanship for articles published in our local papers. According to the Washington Examiner, our director has used Alliance help in posting to our social media and has used Alliance talking points to push back on concerns about our county's participation. Our participation in the Alliance is now much bigger than Brunswick County alone. Our director's recent appointment to the President of the North Carolina Association of Director of Elections makes our Alliance membership now a statewide issue. And I thought, and I might add, she admitted at last month's meeting before her appointment to her new position, that she did not know what the position entails. Believe me, the so-called nonpartisan Alliance knows and will be all the more willing to define it for her. The question is, will our director rely on Alliance help and influence in her new role? It still puzzles me that Brunswick was selected as a center of excellence among all election board nationwide. If designated as such, why do we seek to benchmark others? Should they not be benchmarking us? If we seek best practices and improvement, why can't the very organization that our director has now duly selected as president to be the answer to your tasking from last month's meeting? I close with the words of County Commissioner Frank Williams, when he was quoted as saying, "You don't want anything to undermine the perceived integrity of our elections." I emphasize the word anything undermine and perceived integrity. Anything as in nonpartisan nonprofits participating in elections for partisan gain. Undermine, referring to the examples I will provide you. And perceived integrity, are we to become in 2024, like many states that do not know their election outcomes for months and then the outcome is challenged in court? I respectfully request the Brunswick County Board of Elections remove the county from all participation and communication with all nonprofit organizations, right or left wing. It is the right thing to do for the citizen taxpayers of Brunswick County and the state as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mrs. Hill Nichols will be next. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
I've recently read some support from local residents that were speaking out in agreement with our county's membership in the Alliance and the taking of nonprofit third-party money to run our elections. They claimed without fact or documentation that our county commission and the Republican-controlled legislature have grossly underfunded elections in Brunswick County. That's the first any of us, or to my knowledge, the county commissioners have been accused of this charge from our local Board of Elections or its staff. One writer stated, "We live on an island of electoral excellence" and praised our county for being named "one of ten national centers for excellence," but then slammed the Republican legislature and our county commissioners for underfunding our elections. How can both be true? In addition, "If there is a problem with the amount of money the state gives our board, take it up with a Democrat governor. He signed the budget." You see, the writers of these false claims want the readers to think there was a nationwide search for these centers of excellence based on nonpartisan merit. The Alliance chose and targeted these 10 counties for specific reasons, not necessarily blamed on merit. They were, here's the criteria used, excitement and willingness for participation, commitment to improve practices and procedures, commitment to work with other members, share materials and input. And remember, some 24 states and counting have already banned private money in elections and that would be the case here if our governor hadn't vetoed the legislation. It's interesting to note that Clark County, Nevada, was also selected via center of excellence and they lost 725,000 mail-in ballots and mailed 223,000 ballots to the wrong persons. So you see, it's not about election excellence at all, it's about election influence. It's about third-party money and outsiders telling us what to do here in our county. Here are just a couple of examples, mostly for the audience, about how third-party influence has not worked out well across this nation and even here in our county. And the board has many other examples that are documented. The Center for Voter Information and together with the Voter Participation Center sent out in 2020 nearly 600,000 erroneous Virginia absentee ballot forms that confused voters mixing up the names of counties with other similarly named cities. Some North Carolina residents received as many as seven mail-in ballot applications from the Center of Voter Information, all unsolicited and designed to look like government documents. Zucker bucks that were granted to Madison, Wisconsin, paid for at least 12 drop boxes to gather mail-in ballots, which the Wisconsin Supreme Court later ruled were unconstitutional in July of 2022. In March of 23, just last month, the Center for Voter Information flooded Wisconsin with pre-filled absentee ballot applications to gin up support for Democrats. There was only one problem, the center botched voters' names, creating confusion and alarm in a state already troubled by election mistrust. It got so bad, the Wisconsin Commission issued a warning to voters. And right here in Brunswick County, the North Carolina Board of Elections presented seven cases of swearing falsely in a primary or general election to a Brunswick County grand jury. The grand jury indicted all cases presented to them. The common thread that connects each of these defendants is that they are all convicted felons whose voting rights had not been restored. Either that or they were illegal aliens. Three of these people have been convicted so far. So it's a common thread among these cases that they are largely centered on two issues, mail-in balloting and no voter ID. Both of these are agenda points of the Alliance and both issues are rife with election fraud. To close, for over a decade, I have been heavily involved with the conservative think tank Heritage Foundation and its action arm Heritage Action for America. I would not want their money or influence here in our elections. So the fact that many Democrats and others want left-wing money and influence tells you they want to influence our elections in a very biased way. So please do the right thing as you have up until now, keep the influence out. Sarah knows how to run our elections without this outside influence. Our county and its voters are not up for sale.
Lucille Nichols, in San Brozio, be ready. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julia Hill Nichols. I am a fairly new resident to North Carolina, coming from Colorado for the last couple of years and I do believe in nonprofit organizations and that is why I volunteered for a number of organizations here in North Carolina, including the League of Women Voters. I have a long history of volunteering. It's impressive to see how Americans step up to the plate. Yes, there are those whose energies are spent on complaining and dragging us down. But the vast majority will say, okay, how can we come together to tackle the issues? They create nonprofit organizations and collaboratives that develop solutions, highlight best practices. They make a difference. Integrity of data matters. It impacts our trust in decisions that are made, relationships with others and the institutions of which we are all a part of. Surely you trust your director, recently sworn in as the President of Surely you trust your director, recently sworn in as the President of the North Carolina Association of Directors of Elections. To wisely evaluate information and resources. The Alliance for Election Excellence is a nonpartisan collaborative. That is bringing together election officials, designers, technologists and other experts to help local election departments improve operations. Develop a shared set of standards and values and obtain access to best-in-class resources. To run successful elections. Brunswick County Board of Elections was recently recognized for election excellence. The honor is a recognition that Brunswick County is committed to leadership. In election administration and looking to develop even more resilient, trustworthy voter-centric elections. I was born in DC. At that time, we weren't voting. I believe in elections strongly. Both sides of the aisle. Whether, what, wherever and however, we can ensure integrity in the pursuit of truth. We must grab hold. North Carolina is a state on the move, literally. Movement within our counties as well as from other states is at all-time high. And Brunswick County is one of the top ten counties with massive growth. This level of movement impacts the administration of voter records. Continuous improvement is a necessity. But alas, there are those who view the Alliance for Election Excellence as an outside influence. That we know best. Is short-sighted and shall I say xenophobic. Learning from others, their successes and their failures is how we grow as individuals and communities. This reputable organization makes us better and our participation makes them better. Brunswick County Board of Elections needs to remain a member of the Alliance for Election Excellence. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, you're next.
Yes, thank you. Yeah. Good afternoon. My name is Vic Camaroso. I'm from Sunset Beach. Thank you for listening and thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication. For thirty years, I was a volunteer back home in my small town. I served on the zoning board, the finance committee, school committee, the board of selectmen. And I saw firsthand how much we rely on our local boards and our volunteers. And that's why I find it so disturbing that this board and our election workers are under attack based on lies and conspiracy theories. After the false claims that the 2020 election was stolen. Election workers and their families around the country got thousands of threats. Including threats to hang them, lynch them, and exterminate their families. One threat read, I know where you sleep. Karen Bell, the Executive Director of North Carolina's Board of Elections, said before last fall's election. They actually got a threat that someone would be murdered. Threats like that caused forty-five directors of North Carolina's election boards to resign and retire last year. Now ask this board, remember how you felt last Thanksgiving when you opened up your local paper. Instead of seeing a congratulations and a thanks for running a successful election, you saw this. It's an editorial cartoon. In this cartoon. It shows election workers stuffing ballot boxes. And voters are asking the election workers, hey, what's going on? And the election workers say, nothing to see here. Have some Kool-Aid. Bogus conspiracy theories like that. Caused thirty percent of our election workers nationwide to quit over the last two years. And that wave of departures could become a tsunami. Because of the remaining election workers, about thirty-five percent are eligible to retire before 2024. Who's going to want to replace them? Nobody. If we can't protect our election workers from outrageous claims like this. Election workers who quit mostly give two reasons. They say, one, the threats they get because of baseless conspiracy theories like that. And two, overwork because they are under-resourced and underfunded. Both of those things are at work in this resolution. We all lose when fear makes good people quit public service. So what are we gonna do? Are we gonna protect our election workers? The best way to protect them is to stand up to the lies. Don't cave to this pressure. Don't reward election deniers. They'll never be satisfied. The pressure won't end if you withdraw from the Alliance. And withdrawing won't end the harassment. All it will do is validate the conspiracy theorists in their minds. And it will encourage the harassment to continue and get worse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bean, after. Go ahead, there. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. Board of Elections, thank you very much for your professional and dedicated service to our county. I don't think civil servants get thanked enough for the jobs that you do. I know it's long and arduous, particularly during election season. So thank you for what you do. The other part I would like to point out is that. The resolution from the county commissioners is absolutely outrageous. And frankly, y'all should be insulted that they're questioning your integrity with no cause. That's a load of malarkey as far as I'm concerned. And I would be insulted if I were you and I'd be outraged as well. They have no cause for this. The Board of Elections is completely independent from the county commissioner's office. Y'all have separate lines. Y'all are stovepiped up to the state level. They have no business getting into what you're doing as our Board of Elections. Furthermore. What makes it worse is that they are wasting our tax dollars. Every taxpayer here in Brunswick County should be outraged that they're wasting our time. With this line of reasoning that has zero basis and zero facts. One of the previous speakers was completely ignorant, apparently didn't have the time to research public records that show. That we are funded here in Brunswick County at about thirty-five percent of the national average. Y'all are punching way above your weight class for how you're being funded. And I compliment you for that. Please. Please continue your association with the Alliance. You have my trust and you should have the rest of the county's trust in the integrity of what you are doing for our Board of Elections. Please continue your good work. Thank you.
Alice Bean. Bill Moore, you be ready?
Good afternoon. I'm Alex Bean. Our Board of Elections should continue to be nonpartisan partisan. We live in a democracy, not an autocracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, Mr. Hart's speaking next.
Good afternoon, everybody. Well, let me start out by saying I thank you for the wonderful job you've done here. Brunswick County is in fact, one of the best counties for elections that I've ever been in, I've been in for. So I want to congratulate you for a great job. So with that said, there's some things I need to say though. So let's get going. I am Bill Moore. I am chairman of the Republican Party in this county. And I support the action taken by the Brunswick County Commissioners regarding the resolution. Against the use of any third-party money in elections. I do agree with my Democratic friends and other people here that continue to say that the Brunswick County. Elections are continued to be fair and without corruption. And you to be commended for that great job, all of you, especially Sarah and her people. They've done a magnificent job. Further, we recommend the hard work being done by the Brunswick Board of Elections staff and leadership. However, people are failing to mention where the majority of the funding is flowing to the Alliance for Election Excellence. That money's coming from left-leaning organizations. And you really need to dig deep. The first line you look out there, it's kind of nebulous. You go back a little bit further, you see where that money's coming from. However, continuous public trust in our election system must be a top priority for all the people of Brunswick and beyond. Any money that comes from private groups to support the administration or actual voting brings an appearance of impropriety, whether justified or not. Some voters cannot help but be concerned as to what, if anything, that money's purchasing. Based on a desire to maintain Brunswick County elections at its current high transparency and corruption-free level. We urge the Brunswick County Board of Elections to accept the county commissioner's request to terminate the membership of the US Alliance for Election Excellence. And reject any further offers of third-party money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Ms. Pretty next. Go ahead.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Board of Elections has two primary functions. Number one is maintaining the accuracy of the voter rolls. To confirm every eligible voter can vote and remove anyone that is not eligible to vote. And number two, accurately and efficiently count all the ballots after an election. Good news. Is there have been major advancements in technology to maintain the voter rolls. I trust you've all had the opportunity to review the Eagle AI demo that was provided to Sarah. Maybe you have, maybe you haven't. Okay, I guess you haven't. Did they see it?
No.
Okay, we'll make sure you get to see it. It's a game changer. The feedback on this technology from both Democrat and Republican election managers. And board members has been very positive. The creators of the software have been involved in detecting medical fraud. To do that involves using publicly available databases and looking for inconsistencies. As it turns out, cleaning up the voter rolls requires a very similar process using publicly available data. The Eagle AI program automates list maintenance using artificial intelligence. And machine learning technology to a whole new level. And increases staff efficiency, staff efficiency, sorry, measurably. It is now operational in Georgia and the company has indicated that they could have it available to Brunswick County next month. This is exactly the type of support to improve the efficiency of the Board of Elections. That the commissioners have committed to supporting. I urge you to move forward with having the Eagle AI software operational next month. I have also shared with you on several occasions the documented problems with voting machines. As I shared with you in February, legislation in several states is proceeding to address elections. As a national security item. Arizona has now passed a law. Requiring that all voting equipment meet Department of Defense standards. Unfortunately, none of the Arizona voting equipment meets that standard. That means all the Arizona voting equipment will have to be replaced, if that's even possible. To understand how this type of legislation affects North Carolina. I have requested that you contact both the NCSBE. And Hart Inter-Civic to better understand whether our tabulators would be affected by this type of legislation. And look forward to your update. Thank you for maintaining the integrity of the Brunswick County elections.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Foles, Mr. Foles, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name's Marilyn Pretty and I just came out today to show my support. For the Board of Elections and for all the staff that work so hard to have pre-preparations in Brunswick County. I, to be honest, I haven't been in a building other than the grocery and the doctor's office since January. So. I thought this was really important to come out today. And I do take offense in that people that have got up to this microphone. Would accuse the director, Sarah Laverne, of being manipulated. My experience as a candidate was just one of the best experiences I've ever had with a government agency. Ever in my entire life. I worked for the federal government, state government, the public health. Agency with numerous departments all through my career. And this has been the best organization I've ever come across. And I just wanted to show my support and hope that they maintain their alliance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Dan Cook, after this.
Hello, my name is Mel Foles. I live in Leland. And some of the comments I'm gonna make are those of. Good group of young men or individuals that live in the Leland area but. Are not totally into the politics. It's come to my attention that the Brunswick County Board of Elections is accepting monies from outside non-governmental agencies. Namely, the Alliance, a branch of the CTCL, better known as Zuckerbucks. Now, you saw the interview last night with Elon Musk. You know that Zuckerbucks or Mark Zuckerberg had an influence in a left-leaning manner. He mentioned that through his research on all his Twitter stuff that he just purchased. This organization was and is known to influence the outcome of elections in different parts of the country. Sarah, our director of the BOE, signed an agreement with the Alliance organization. I really have questions about this move. Not so much that she may not be the most, well, competent individual. But this is an important. Well. Go ahead. This. It is because, it is, she did accept, or did she accept a large stipend? In exchange for favors that may take place later in the election process. Hold it now. Okay. Let me speak. If she needs further education or needs to garner new ideas. Why can't she meet with other BOE directors in our own state where. May have similar problems. In my recent research, I found the Alliance organization pays for her travel to Chicago where the. Alliance organization at CTL or CTCO is located. Also, she was just selected the chair or president of the BOE for the state of North Carolina. Where our entire state can be influenced by this NGO. From my conversations with certain members of the Brunswick County Commissioners. There's a budget for the director of the BOE and the staff for further training and educational purposes. Therefore, we don't need outside monies involved in our elections. We already know that twenty-six other states have banned NGOs from contributing monies to the election process. Also, in a recent Rasmussen poll, seventy percent of the people, including fifty-two percent of the blacks. And sixty-two percent of the Democrats believe this is bad for democracy. Our elected officials from this area, including Senator Raven. Representatives Eiler and Miller, along with our commissioners, have voted to ban outside monies or NGOs. From being involved in our election process. In the past, our General Assembly presented. In the past, our General Assembly presented legislation preventing outside organizations from interfering in the election process. On a federal level, Claudia Tenney, a representative from New York Twenty-Fourth District, recently presented legislation called the End of Zuckerbucks, the End of Zuckerbucks Act, which was done March fifteenth. Commissioner Frank Williams, along with Pat Sykes, presented resolutions expressing their concerns in allowing outside organizations and their monies being involved in our elections. This contract ought to be nullified in order to eliminate the appearance of fraudulent practices and restore the confidence in our election process. The citizenry of this county, be they Republican, Democrat, or independent, want free and fair elections. If you decide to maintain disagreement, you are permitting the possibility of fraudulent practices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Cook. I'm from Bolivia, retired U.S. Air Force. And I moved here because of the great work that you folks have been doing in this area. My wife and I bought a business. We bought Libby Office Suites. And I have a great story because we received an absentee ballot. And I was afraid, what do I do with this? This was a few years back. I went to the Republican place first because, because of bad things that I've heard. They told me immediately to take it to the Board of Elections. We did so and we met, my wife and I met you. And I left glad that we had moved to Bucks, I'm sorry, I moved from Bucks County to Brunswick County. And I just want to thank you for all that you have done to engender trust among the citizens who live right here. And so I'm simply asking that we do stand as a community and solve our own election problems and try not to bring in the outside money. Because as much as I trust you, I don't trust the people that were said there. And I promise you, I would never threaten anyone with violence, but I do believe that there was fraud in the past election. I'm sorry, in the twenty and I believe that it was stolen. I don't believe it was stolen here. I'm not here to prove anything. I'm here to tell you, thank you very much for all the work you do so that when I doubt the election, at least here in this county, I believe that the votes were counted correctly.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry, so Will, you'll be next. May is soon will. Thank you, ma'am. Stacy.
My name is Karen Easton. I'm a resident of Leland and a member of the League of Women Voters. And as a proud Brunswick County poll worker, I've told my friends and family many times over what a great job this county does of preparing for and running its elections. I've attended training, worked at the polls, attended canvassing meetings. And the more I learn about our process, the more the transparency is evident. The more certain I am that our elections have a high level of integrity. This body, along with Sarah and her staff, should be commended for a job that has been and continues to be well done. Most recently, Sarah has been honored with a leadership position among her peers and has been able to attend gatherings to learn best practices for elections directors. She described some of the beneficial outcomes at last month's meeting. How do you argue with things like that? There is no evidence of any sponsoring organization having any intention of meddling in the actual running of local elections. With the anti-voter bills currently being discussed in Raleigh, it is more important than ever that we maintain the level of excellence of the elections in Brunswick County. I strongly urge that the commissioners continue to support this excellence excellence by refraining from fixing what is clearly not broken. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There will, and this Alan next after, that was, I'm sorry. I call Ms., I call, I had to call Ms. Easton. Mary. Still, I'm sorry, Ms. Allen. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Shelley Allen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a Democratic Party officer, I've seen firsthand the professionalism of our Board of Elections staff. I trust their judgment. Director Laverne was recently elected president of the North Carolina Association of Directors of Elections. Clearly, her peers statewide trust her too. She and her staff were also named one of the top ten boards in the nation by the nonpartisan U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence. It's offensive that the Board of Commissioners is advancing conspiracy theories about the Alliance, as noted in the Port City Daily, in order to take away a well-deserved national award and valuable resources from our elections staff. Our Board of Elections was underfunded in two thousand and twenty-two by about eight dollars per voter compared to the national average. One would think our commissioners would start properly funding them instead of faulting them for earning grant money eligibility at no expense to the county. Instead, they have manufactured wholly unproven election integrity concerns. My only concern about election integrity is why partisans on the Board of Commissioners and elections are driving a deceptive narrative that bulldozes over upstanding public servants. They are, they are planting the seeds of doubt about our elections that they claim to be trying to weed out. The GOP resolutions imply that our election staffers are not capable of making sound professional decisions about the resources they use. This is a good strategy for alienating outstanding employees. Commissioner Williams stated that the Democratic Party's support of the BOE staff is a good reason to keep private money out of elections. His partisan deflection contained not a shred of verifiable proof that the money is used to undermine elections. The twenty-two percent of registered Democrats in Brunswick County appreciate that even though we don't win most elections around here, the Board of Elections Director and her staff are top-notch. We don't blame upstanding election workers when we lose. We expect all those seated on this board, regardless of political affiliation, to present the facts versus political tropes, to dispel false perceptions and to support Director Laverne and her staff. They would not participate in the Alliance if it threatened election integrity. They have an unimpeachable track record and shame on those who would question their integrity. I strongly urge the Board to back our elections staff and oppose corrosive resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. It's Garrity. Ms. Kazuki will be after, Mr. Kazuki will be after Ms. Garrity. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Christine Garrity and I reside in Calabash. The resolution to end the Board of Elections' association with the nonpartisan U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence is based on false information about funding for the Alliance. The allegation that the Alliance is funded by Mark Zuckerberg and rich, rich Democratic liberals who wanted to influence elections has been debunked by the Federal Elections Commission, PolitiFact, and the Port City Daily. What's more, multiple lawsuits challenging the grants were filed, none of which were successful. In one case, a U.S. district judge appointed by George W. Bush refused to block the grant money. An appeals court later held that those who were at one of the suits failed to identify any laws that would prohibit the grants. I believe that the Board of Elections' association with the Alliance has been good for the board staff and the voters of Brunswick County. Membership in the Alliance means the Board of Elections' professional staff has access to best practices and their peers across the country. Access to the Alliance's predecessor was important in meeting the unusual and expensive needs that occurred during the two thousand and twenty election when COVID nineteen was still a deadly threat for many Americans. Private funding would not be necessary if the Republican-run General Assembly and the County Commission provided adequate funding to the Board of Elections. In two thousand and twenty-two, the average American county spent seventeen dollars and ten cents per voter. The Board of Elections here in Brunswick County was only able to spend seven dollars and eighty-six cents or would spend eight, seven dollars and eighty-six cents less per voter. Yet, the County Commission in the resolution it approved in March urges the General Assembly to consider increasing funding for county boards throughout the state. The resolution under consideration today is the product of a fabricated conspiracy theory spread by state and national organizations that insults the excellent work of our Board of Elections. Please don't insult their integrity. I urge you to vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Wonder Blake after this, Ms. Blake after this.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Kazloski from Sunset Beach. This is my first interaction with the local government, not counting my interaction with the South Bay Area School Board over military recruiting matters in nineteen ninety-two. I live in Sunset Beach and before coming to Sunset Beach, I spent twenty years as a military officer and nineteen years with Department of Homeland Security. I only mention this to give a little bit of credibility to my judgment, mentioning an organization, knowing when an organization does something well. In October and November twenty twenty-two, I served as a poll worker at Brunswick County, sixteen shifts in early voting and also all day on Election Day. With no prior voting experience or election experience, I was very favorably impressed with every aspect of the planning, training, and execution of the Brunswick County election process. I believe the Board of Elections' membership in the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence significantly benefits the county and in particular, the overall election process. And I'll try to keep this focused just on the issue at hand. I read much of what I could find in this issue from the media, government officials from both parties, websites for the Alliance, their partner agencies, Federal Election Commission, and of course, the resolution that was passed by our county commissioners. From what I understand, participation in the organization allows the county to share best practices with other jurisdictions nationwide and potentially learn new processes related to election integrity, efficiency, and potential threats. This is critically important. Constant improvement is always necessary. I learned that from my short time in the private sector. The county is growing rapidly. Technology is changing. And election integrity and confidence in the process has got to be maintained. I also understand that there is a funding component to membership in the Alliance, and this seems to be the primary concern. This isn't unreasonable, especially if the funding comes with partisan strings. Concerns over undue influence, should that ever occur, can be identified and prevented through proper oversight. And this is already in place. The Board of Elections has an outstanding track record for proper management and it's staffed by members of both parties. Additional oversight is provided by the county commissioners, the North Carolina State Board of Elections, and finally, the Federal Election Commission. The resolution on this matter mentions suitable alternatives to the Alliance. This is a good thing. While it makes sense, I recommend the Board of Elections critically evaluate which partnership is going to provide them with the best opportunities for the county election organization to learn, to share, to improve, and to grow. The membership quality and reputation of any proposed alternative organization is going to matter. Brunswick County is clearly a leader in election excellence. I think active membership in the Alliance, as well as any other nonpartisan organizations with a similar mission, will enable that to continue. Both parties benefit equally from this relationship, and more importantly, so do we as the citizens. The benefits far outweigh the risks. And for these reasons, I urge the Board of Elections to maintain its membership with the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence. And I also realize that these aren't the only factors that you're having to bear when you make the decision. There are other things more than just simple logic. Thank you for your time.
Blake, Ms. Blake. Ms. Blake. Folks, we're about two-thousand way through, got about eight speakers after Ms. Blake. I commend you on your restraint sometime. About an hour in and we'll be wrapping up here probably about twenty minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing to allow me to speak today. My name is Shonda Blake. I'm a resident in Leland. Excuse me, I'm dealing with a bit of a cold here. I received information that shows that the U.S. Alliance and Election Excellence, formerly a sub-affiliate of the CTCL, has received money from the CEO of Facebook Social Media Mobile, Mark Zuckerberg. This brought up a lot of concerns for myself. Seeing as all the information that we come through, we can find that the CLT had partnered with North Carolina and also with other states. In two thousand and twenty, elections with CRT partnered with Centers of Civil Design and helped design absentee ballots and forms and instructions, crafting voter registration letters for felons and tested automated voter registration systems in several states, working along these progressive activist groups in Michigan and directly with election officers, excuse me, offices in Georgia and Utah. Since the election of two thousand and twenty and after many states and counties went back and looked, they identified several cases of election fraud. These particular were drop boxes and absentee ballots. We want to keep our elections fair and out of the hands of malicious individuals. We want to take, take care of our right to vote and have our voice. The county in Brunswick in two thousand and twenty had concerns as well. In two thousand and twenty, voters in the county reported that they had witnessed, and this came from the people, had witnessed eight persons with voter, excuse me, with interfering with voter. Since then, and two years have passed, as mentioned by one of the speakers, three of the individuals were charged and the others four were listed as illegal aliens. And you can find this at the DA's office. This brought up some more concerns for myself. Raising a family of five, I want to prepare my children to be able to, be able to speak out and to secure their vote. I'm afraid with outside influences and not getting emotions involved, but thinking critically that if we don't think now to hold our elections and hold our election officials accountable for anything that could possibly come into our county that would interfere with our children and our children's rights to vote, I think that we need to consider that. I know that running as a director, Sarah has had lots of responsibilities. When it came to the attention that Sarah has been named the President of the Nancy Association of Directors for Elections, I thought that this was a concern, seeing as how when we were looking at the Alliance, their connection with Zuckerbucks. I asked today that the Board would think critically on this contract. And I asked that you rescind and rescind the contract. I see from the contract that there will be no risk if we were to cancel the contract. And I asked that the Board And I asked that the board would look at other alternatives to secure our votes. Thank you.
In command. Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Gilbert. And Mr. Williamson, the other Mr. Williamson after this. Mr. Gilbert, come on.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Gilbert and I'm a proud citizen of Hickman Falls, Rhode. Glad to be here, commissioners and fellow citizens. One of the things that I want to share with you, first of all, is that, as I sit here today and I listen and I it's troubling that what's on national news is creeping into Brunswick County or already here. This divisive polarization of our citizen, personal attacks. And I've been on the ballot in Brunswick County since nineteen ninety-two several times, but I have not one time taken a pot shot at someone. Cheap shot. So today, as I listen to some of the cheap shots of my fellow citizens, I just say, I grew up in Southport, North Carolina. We had two sayings that I recall today. One of them was, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And mind who you listen. So today, our Brunswick County elections have been great. Being marnish, the day, we heard that our elections were barren and partial, no issues, but yet we seek to change. I hope we can avoid our county election staff being politicized, diminished because of baseless, baseless partisan conspiracy theories advanced by the county commissioner. We urge our board today to reject this damaging proposal. The commissioners all support Citizen United, the Supreme Court decision that allowed unlimited dark money to go into elections. But they come today and they want a resolution to oppose a nonpartisan effort to best practice our elections. You stand as a great beacon of light and of hope between what our people can view as dysfunction. You're either the backbone of democracy or you can be the doorway to anarchy. I hope that you would choose democracy. Your vote would speak volumes and speak to us moving forward to getting, unless we get bogged down in organic politics. You all must answer the question. Why are people so afraid of bipartisan, working together bipartisan efforts? I encourage you to be steadfast, unmovable, always put the best interest of the people before politics. Set your hearts and minds free. Reject the tax and spending commissioners' political scheme and vote no on the waived resolution. And I would say to you finally, as I close, not one person in this group today has shared with us what percentage will Brunswick County receive from the Alliance. I think there's a lawsuit in Delaware that's taking place today about all of that garbage talk. And I would just urge the commission to set yourselves free. Do the right thing. Don't be bothered or distracted by politics or other persuasion. Just do the right thing. If it's not broke, don't fix it. Thank you. God bless you. You're doing a marvelous work. Keep doing it.
Mr. Williamson and then Mr. Timothy Randall after that.
Afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Clayton Williamson and unlike the last speaker, I'm relatively new to North Carolina.
Well.
Just moved from Leland last May. I moved from Georgia. And if you follow the national news much, you'll know that they had quite some interesting things in their in their last few elections.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
And part of that had to do with private money being brought into their election system. And in fact, over the last couple of years, they've changed their laws in Georgia and are still struggling to get things straightened out. So I would suggest that there's a certain tale there that folks might want to look at. Because if you follow through on where the money came from in Georgia, it follows through to the same places that the money's coming from for the Alliance. And you don't have to be really curious to figure that out. And if you just drive through multiple pages and sources, you can find it. So I took a little different look at this. We've heard tons of of details about why we should and why we shouldn't. If you haven't figured it out yet, I think we should not continue business with the Alliance. So far, the the best that I can find, there's some twenty-four states that have banned the Alliance or private money, let's say. There's twelve counties among states that haven't banned completely that have banned. There are three states, including North Carolina, of course, with pending bills in their legislatures. And even the House, as was pointed out earlier, the U.S. House has a bill pending. So it's not like the folks in this room that suggest that we should not stick with the Alliance are all alone. I'm a veteran of the Air Force and as such, I moved around a little bit and then I moved around even more when I got out of the Air Force. I voted in six different states. Everybody's election systems seem to be a little different here and there. I've worked the polls in three of those six states and trust me, things are different from one state to the next. But I'm trying to take a step back on all that and and just look at the common sense part of it. And my my mother told me, you know, things are too good to be true. You ought to check them out a little closer because oftentimes they are. So it'd be good to know where all this money is coming from, who it's coming from, why they are providing the money. And even in the case of the Alliance, if we don't have the money to pay for a membership, by golly, there's a scholarship. And that's exactly what happened in Georgia after they passed their first set of laws. The folks down there came in the back door with a scholarship, so they had to go back to their legislature. So that's really about all I've got. There seems some folks have been up here talking about what a great deal the Alliance is. As I understand it, it only came into being a year ago this month. And what effect it may have had on our elections is, in my mind at least, questionable. The real effect can only be measured as we go into the future if we stay with the Alliance. So one other thing which I found interesting when I when I was going through my research, I took a look at the names of the folks that were had already put in comments that came out in the package for this meeting. And I found one of them actually is registered to vote twice in North Carolina. So maybe we ought to focus a little bit on list maintenance. So we don't have that many more people registered to vote that can actually vote. And that would help certainly make our elections more dependable. So just take a look at it from some from a common sense standpoint.
Thank you.
Where's the money?
Thank you, sir.
Veronese, Ron Veronese X. Yes, sir. Be ready. Thanks, sir.
My name is Timothy Randall. Thanks, sir. I'm from Galabash. I'm a Brunswick County native. I want to thank you guys for what you're doing. I want to make some statements and I'm going to be short and brief. I think we need to maintain our membership with the U.S. Alliance. I've heard a lot of things said, a lot of things said, a lot of things said, a lot of things said. There is one thing that's true. If something's not broke, why are we going to fix it? Why are we going to fix it? If it's working, leave it alone. That and say one more thing and I'm going to take my seat. I was very offended at how Ms. Sarah was attacked here today. Very offended how she was attacked today. There was no call for that. We're here for a simple discussion on stuff, not to attack any individual in here. This is supposed to be United States of America, Brunswick County, which I, as a native, think is the best county in North Carolina, the best county in the state, best place to live in the world. But sometimes we just do not act like that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Anderson, Sterling, Nets Anderson. Vanessa Maker, after you. Go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Ron Veronese. I live in Holton Beach. And five years ago, I never worked an election. And in two thousand and twenty, I decided I'd volunteer. And I went to the training. I worked multiple days of primary election, multiple days of the general election and the election days are the longest days of my life. The training was great. So I said, well, that means I can go back next year. And I did for the next election. And I did go back the next election. And it was the same darn training. And the fact is that that's how you get good, quality poll workers is that you're you're not expected to know everything. There's always nuances and as much as they try to cover all the irregular possibilities, you you won't know until election day when you get one. So I'm very proud of how the Board of Elections and Melissa and the staff do their rigorous training. And I'd just like to make a few examples of what we face. There was a voter that came in late on Election Day and wanted to vote, but he was out of precinct. He said, well, I got to vote here and one stop. Well, here's the deal. And we explained to him what what candidates he was able to vote for. They were more statewide. Or he could go to his precinct, but he didn't have enough time to do that. And another time, voter pulled up pulling a big trailer and we dealt with him curbside. And so took his information, couldn't find him in the system, came back. He was adamant that he had registered to vote. And we said, well, geez, you know, so finally, the chief judge had to come out and work with him, see what was going on. Well, he he had registered that morning at the DMV. So maybe we should have this group grant the voting public.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Finstermaker. And after that, Ms. Austin, Mr. 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 Terry Austin. Not sure. Go ahead.
I guess it's Air Force Day. I'm a twenty-four-year Air Force officer and I moved here about a year ago.
Station A, please.
My name is Eric Finstermaker.
Sorry, thank you.
And I'm from Bolivia.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, what I found in Brunswick County, I moved from Dade County and not Dade County, I'm sorry, Wake County. And I I find in Brunswick County is far superior. And everybody on this board should be commended because I heard bipartisan support of this board. That was one thing I heard bipartisan. Everybody thought y'all were doing a good job and y'all should commend yourself. People that say this board is is not partisan, that's incorrect, though. And and I'm not saying that y'all are, that I'm not challenging integrity. I'm sure that y'all both all have a lot of integrity. Y'all are appointed by, you're appointed by the Republican Party, you're reported by the Democratic Party, and you're appointed by our governor, who is a Democrat. So therefore, this is not a nonpartisan group. And I don't I don't believe that's a problem because everybody's doing a good job. Sarah, you're doing a great job. My wife works since I've heard I've heard nothing but good things about you. My wife has worked with you. You called her this morning to answer a question for her. And you're doing a great job and I'm sure everybody that needs you're very approachable. Pat yourself on the back. People that say, don't fix it because it's not broken. Well, that may be true, but how long have y'all been in the Alliance? A year? Have we had an election under Alliance? No. So, you know, that that that's a mute point to me. It really concerns me as being an Air Force officer. I I fought three wars. And I didn't have generals tell me to go to war. It's politicians. That means y'all voted for them. And trust in the vote in America is a big thing to me. And I don't think that Americans today, and I'll be one of them, trust the vote. And whether or not it's, you know, true or not, the the appearances there that there's something wrong with our voting system. And and people that say that, I'm sorry, I should address you only, but people that say that it's Democrat, I mean, Republicans have conspiracy theories. Well, I heard the same thing. I heard the exact same thing from Democrats four years before that. So it's not that. And there's a lot of people on both sides of the party think there's problems. I don't think there's a problem in Brunswick County. I really don't. I think that y'all doing a good job. Do y'all think your voter rolls are correct? No, I don't. And you know why? It's not your fault. I think there's problems with technology. And the technology is where the money needs to be spent. Another thing, you also said that you're only funded. I think we heard that from both sides. You're only funded. Great. Now, here's one point that I think needs to be pointed out. Sarah, you have to go to these meetings for this Alliance, right? It takes away your time, doesn't it? Is it worth it? That's the question. Is it worth it? Are we getting something out of it? Is it something that everybody in this, everybody in this group gets something out of it? To a point that it takes away your time and your your talents away from this this county. We have limited resources. I agree with that. If you do decide to go with the Alliance and keep the money, I would like to respectfully ask, do you make sure that any money received from the Alliance does not obligate this board for any sharing of voter information that is not available to the public for use in any type of get out the vote or targeted get out the vote campaigns? This information is shared between the Republican and Democratic Party to do whatever they want to with. And it's also available to the public so that they can look over your work and make sure it's accurate. I know my wife looks at it for accuracy, not only for this county, but for a lot of other counties. And she's finding problems, yes. Whether they whether it was malicious attempt or not, it's not bipartisan. I mean, it's bipartisan in nature. There are people, there's problems with our system. I know that. Whether you know, whether it's illegal or not, I don't know, but there's opportunity for illegal actions to happen. Money used in the Alliance program. If it's given to you, I respectfully ask that you do not use it for any type of get out the vote campaigns. That is a that is a purpose of the parties to do that, not the Board of Elections. You are to provide us information. I mean, you to provide us access to the vote and I appreciate that. I know that y'all having problems sat in another board meeting and y'all have problems finding places to vote. And that's a problem. I can see that. Y'all need money. Y'all need access to facilities to get out people to vote. I hope everybody in this county can vote. And I hope every eligible person, let me put that, oh, every legal eligible person should be able to vote. And I believe truly that most Republicans and Democrats believe the same thing. I have friends both sides of the aisle. I have arguments. I have arguments between my party. But that that doesn't mean that we're all not citizens of this country and we all hopefully all want this to be a better place. And that's the end of mine. Sorry, I took so long.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm Sterling. My name is on the right.
Oh, yeah, somehow you got, okay, yes, sir. And then Mr. Austin.
I just want to ask you guys, when was the last time you had this kind of attack on your, on your board? When was the last time? Did you answer? Was it, when was the last time? I'm curious. Is this the first time?
I'm not sure. Go ahead and make your presentation.
It's the first time. And the question should be asked, why? Why are we wasting people's time on information that's in the public in the United States? The election was looked at by the courts, by the states, by you name it. And they said it was fair. The only reason we're here today, one reason, Trump lost. Yes, he lost. Participacy lost. That doesn't mean we need to tear down the whole system. To please people. No, no, wake up, grow up. You lose, you get up and you fight again. You don't cry and whine and try to tear down the United States because you lost an election. Get it together. Because this ain't gonna work for nobody. Thank you, sir.
Austin.
Austin. A L S T O N, Austin. Oh. No, 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 no.
Does anybody know what the alliance says about why it's here? Do any of you know? Have you read their, their program? Have you spent any time looking at what their expectations are? Yes, no, no. Well, do you mind if I read just one of their little statements?
Sure, presentation, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Of course, now that I want it.
And I'm sorry, you, sometimes ladies are spelled T or I and sometimes gentlemen are T or Y. Please go ahead.
All right. This is, this is from the Alliance for Voting Excellence. This is designed by local election departments for local election departments. The alliance is a nonpartisan collaborative that is bringing together election officials, designers, technologists, and other experts to help local departments improve operations. Develop a set of shared standards and values and obtain access to best-in-class resources for those successful elections. Sounds okay to me. Um, somebody mentioned here, I don't remember which one, that the Democrats rarely win in Brunswick County, and that's true. I've been here for 26 years. We don't have a large democratic representation in any of our collectives. So where is the integrity an issue here? I've been involved here for years doing voter registration and I have worked as a poll worker. Had worked with Sarah. She has been remarkable and issues have been brought, her questions have been asked and she's helped to resolve them. Um, it's interesting that the commission, as it exists now, is all Republican, so I'm not quite sure where their issue is. I would be loving, I would love to look at where their campaign financing money comes from, since that is also an issue at hand here. The Board of Elections does an outstanding job. I've worked both out registering, but as a poll worker, I have been very impressed and I've worked in three positions though, over the years. I mean, what is the commission afraid of?
I'm not sure. Go ahead and make your presentation.
Oh, oh, the, the commissioners, the county commissioners, since they've raised this. This is our Board of Elections is in, has outstanding integrity and I don't think we should play.
Thank you, ma'am.
Play with it or do anything to change it at this moment. Let's see what the alliance has to offer. I do not think that we should kowtow to the demands of the county commissioners. Please hold the bar.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Smutski, Mr. Smutski, David Smutski, Mr. Smutski. Got that one right, I guess. Many women named David. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I attend a lot of these things with you. Okay, so I've been coming a lot to, uh, your meetings and I've been attending a lot of the things that the staff's put on and I've worked now a couple of elections with you. Sarah, you are not under attack. This board is not under attack. We've all grown up knowing or understanding that you're known by the company you keep. CTCL claims to be a nonpartisan group, but all the company they keep are very partisan actors. And you're being recruited. You're a prime recruit for that. You've run excellent elections in Brunswick County and you're improving over the years. So, uh, you've hired excellent people, Melissa Butch, and we've been to their testing sessions. And you guys have supervised this for many years. So you are not under attack. We are concerned about the people who are associated with the CTCL. Uh, now, the CTCL is a new thing, so with all your improvement and all the work that you've done excellently, everybody I know is very proud of you, by the way. Very proud of the way things have been, been run here. So, so that's the way it's working. CTCL is new. So that's the new thing. Now, if it's working and you don't want to break it, don't go to CTCL. Um, so the, the bottom line is, we're not concerned about this board. We, we know that the board will keep things together. We know that you and the staff have done excellent work. Um, we are concerned about this group who is associated with a very partisan cast of characters. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the citizens that signed up.
Did anybody come in after we pulled that sheet? You might want to check. Okay.
Oh, yes, go ahead, if.
The sheet wasn't out there when she got here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry.
My name is Joanne Levitan and I am resident of Leland. And I'm just going to share some quick facts. Um, one is money from the alliance was used for voting equipment, personal protection equipment, and for poll workers and hiring additional poll staff. If anybody can tell me how that's going to corrupt elections, I would like to know. Um, the Brunswick County Board of Elections use the money to fund temporary employees to facilitate absentee ballots, which increased exponentially in 2020. Again, how is that corrupting elections? How is that influencing elections? The alliance provides the opportunity to network with other local election administrators and to talk about ways that they administer elections and to share best practices. That's a good thing for elections. In April 2022, Zuckerberg confirmed that he would no longer donate any more money to the organization. The grants were a one-time donation. So everybody calling this Zuckbox, they're not even, you're not even donating anymore. Politics has no place in the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections mandate is to prevent voter fraud and ensure election integrity. The alliance is an organization that promotes all of these ideals and allows our Board of Elections to share best practices with other boards of election and is something that we need to continue to support. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that concludes, uh, the, this session of public comments in the, in the audience and we have received some comments prior to uh, today electronically that every, all the board members have in their hands. Everybody had an opportunity to review those comments.
Yeah, and it was in the public packet that was put out yesterday.
Packet two, you, you got anybody?
We do have some online. I'm going to have Melissa read.
I'm sorry.
We do have some that were submitted online since that time, so I'm going to have Melissa read those.
Please. How many?
I believe there's 10.
I'm sorry?
I believe there's 10.
Okay, please.
Uh, the first is from Shonda Blake. And the comment is, I would like to know when it comes to the contract that our Brunswick County Director signed with the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence. Formerly.
I hate to interrupt. Ms. Blake, did you not speak here? Okay, she spoke. I'm sorry. She's spoken. She's going to speak again.
I was an online comment submitted. Do you want me to read it or not read it since she already spoke?
Do, she like your, would you like your comments read to record, Ms. Blake? She's left. Okay, I couldn't hear you. Uh, yes, go ahead.
Okay.
I would like to know when it comes to the contract that our Brunswick County Director signed with the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence, formerly and a subaffiliate of CTCL, will the county be canceling this contract? There is supporting information and documentation that shows the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence, formerly and a subaffiliate of CTCL, received $350 million donation from Zuckerberg and his wife Priscilla Chan. It is also my understanding that our area representatives, Bill Raymond, Charlie Miller, and Frank Eiler, and the Brunswick County Commissioner Board were also opposed to having outside funding in our local and state elections. The right to vote is a fundamental principle placed in by our founders and should be kept sacred. We should never have a private outside entity running our elections. We, the people, can govern themselves. It is my understanding that the Brunswick County Director Sarah Leavere will be appointed election director for our state. The very act of signing a contract for private funding and then taking a position with the state of North Carolina should give everyone pause. I would like to know if Sarah Leavere plans on bringing this practice of making sworn agreements that allows for malicious acts of voter fraud in our state. The next comment is from Jason Sneed with the Honest Elections Project. My name is Jason Sneed, Executive Director of the Honest Elections Project. HEP is a national nonpartisan organization dedicated to preserving the right to vote in free and fair elections. HEP has done extensive research into the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence, a five-year, $80 million program run by the Center for Tech and Civic Life, and aimed at influencing local election administration. My intention with these comments is to share our finding, findings as the board weigh the decision before you. The alliance may claim to be nonpartisan, but in reality, it is an ideologically motivated coalition with an agenda to reshape election administration. Each of the alliance's partner organizations are founded, run, or funded by individuals and entities with deep ties to the Democratic Party and its allied activist community. And each pushes election policies and reforms that align closely with liberal views on election issues, such as the elimination of voter ID requirements. This entire operation meanwhile is funded, funded by partisan dark money donors, many of whom are undisclosed and may have direct stakes in the outcome of elections. As these facts have come to light, election officials across the country have faced public opposition to joining or receiving funding from the alliance. Ottawa County, Michigan withdrew over concerns that membership would jeopardize, jeopardize public trust in elections. The Greenwich, Connecticut representative town meeting voted to reject alliance membership for its election officials. DeKalb County, Georgia is under investigation for working with the alliance to funnel, funnel $2 million in alliance grants through its county finance office to evade a state law prohibiting direct private funding of election offices. Joining the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence poses grave risks to public trust in the neutrality of election administration. Records obtained from this board through public records requests reveal, reveal that the alliance seeks data aimed to develop improvement plans that reshape election administration and can even offer legal and political consulting to members. Indeed, those records also reveal alliance provided talking points used by members of this board to dismiss concerns over Brunswick County's admission to the program. Now, the board proposes to ignore a unanimous vote from the Brunswick County Commissioners calling on the board to withdraw from the alliance over its deeply partisan ties. This chain of events demonstrates the enormous influence the alliance can have, even when no private grants are provided. The U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence combines ideology, access, influence, and enormous grants in ways that corrode public confidence in election administration. The decision to join this alliance is Brunswick's to make, but any perpetrated, uh, benefits from membership should be weighed against the risk and cost of lost trust. Public elections should always be neutral, nonpartisan, and accountable to the voting public. Uh, the next comment is from Carol Snow with the North Carolina Audit Force. Good afternoon. I posted these comments last week, but was told the public comments portal had recently changed, so I'm posting them again. My comments are in regard to the Brunswick County Board of Elections indirectly accepting private donations for administering elections. The state has been given the responsibility to administer elections and they are to do so in a nonpartisan, non-discriminatory manner. Accepting indirect private funds from a partisan private group would be at odds with that mandate. Furthermore, House Bill 259, the 2023 Appropriations Acts, Act recently passed the third reading with bipartisan support. This bill includes the following language. Nothing in this chapter shall grant authority to the State Board of Elections to accept private monetary donations directly or indirectly for conducting elections, including employing individuals on a temporary basis. Nothing in this chapter shall grant authority to county boards of elections to accept private money, monetary donations directly or indirectly for conducting elections, including employing individuals on a temporary basis. Nothing in this chapter shall grant authority to county boards of commissioners to accept private monetary donations directly or indirectly for conducting elections, including employing individuals under this chapter on a temporary basis. Thank you for considering these comments. The next comment is from Joyce Walling. On January 6th, 2023, Elections Director Sarah Leavere of the Brunswick County Board of Elections signed an agreement with the U.S. Alliance for Elections Excellence related to the Center for Tech and Civic Life to become a member and receive funds. The director is quoted as saying, "The goal of working with the alliance is to learn ways to improve the elections process. This action is very troubling, troubling, and I have three questions relating to my concerns." First, what authority does a Brunswick County employee have to accept non-taxpayer funds to expand the scope of work conducted by a county office? Second, what deficiencies are there in Brunswick County Board of Elections Office operations that have prompted the director to seek out the extensive help and dollars offered by the election alliance? Why is it that this outside entity has more expertise than county employees whose careers are working in elections? Third, why would Brunswick County BOE enter into an agreement for accepting funds along with learning ways to improve the elections process, rather than paying for this expertise that the county presumably does not have? The Brunswick County Board of Elections responsibilities are defined in accordance with federal and state law. The board operates within a budget approved by the elected county commissioners and has sufficient funds to conduct the scope of its responsibilities with the approved budget. The voters did not approve of, of expanding the scope of the board and its staff activities, nor did they, through the commissioners they elected, allocate funds for extra work and related activities, including additional training. The Elections Board and staff have an obligation to the taxpayers to stay within the approved scope of their department within the allocated budget. Professionals of all types seek out information for performance improvement in many ways that do not accept, accepting outside funds. They read available material, network with peers, take courses, earn degrees, et cetera. If these widespread, spread practices are deemed insufficient for the BOE Director, perhaps the operation of the Brunswick County BOE needs to be examined and any operational or staffing changes need to be implemented to remove deficiencies identified. A common practice for improving organizations is hiring consulting firms to make recommendations and assist the organization with implementing any changes. It's unheard of that these consultants pay to bring their expertise to the organization. It is very suspicious that the Alliance for Election Excellence is offering their expertise, expertise as well as offering funds. Brunswick County BOE should turn its back on this agreement and get back to preparing for the 2023 municipal election in November. The next comment is from Jeffrey Lee Derry. The comment is, "Support 100% Brunswick County Board of Elections in terminating its relationship with the U.S. Alliance for Elections Excellence." The next comment is from Seth Keschel. And the comment is, "If stating, if the state is serious about running fair elections, they will refuse to take away power from the citizens of the county to provide proper oversight. The expansion of mail-in balloting will cripple the confidence of, in North Carolina's elections and lead to a breakdown in overall self-government. You must return to paper ballots and precinct-level voting if you would like to recover. Do not spread failed widespread, do not spread failed election practices statewide." The next comment is from Douglas Holden. And the comment is, "Is the Brunswick County Board of Elections going to secure our local elections by canceling the contract signed by Sarah Leavere for private funding from the U.S. Alliance?" The next co, the next comment is from Scott Walter from Capital Research Center. It's printed already? Okay. The next comment is from John Schellenberger. "I am opposed to Brunswick County membership in the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence. I put forth the following for consider when making the decision. Number one, although I believe Ms. LeVere runs an efficient office, it has been reported that Brunswick County Election Office is one of one hundred best in the country. When and how did they evaluate the election office? Did they come interview office worker, election officials, poll workers? What was the criteria to be named as one of one hundred? Given that North Carolina has one hundred election offices and Pennsylvania sixty-seven, with hundreds more offices across the United States, I am amazed that there are only one hundred. Number two, where are the other hundred in strong Republican areas? Three, number three, one of the benefits Ms. LeVere gave was form redesign. I would suggest we could find Brunswick County resources down the road that would love real-life experience. Number four, she also mentions helping enlisting poll workers. I would also suggest that a Brunswick County focus group aid to and make suggestions. Brunswick County has a lot of experienced retirees that would be more than happy using their skills to help improve in the elections process. Five, I'm sure you could find Brunswick County residents who know how to solve problems. Six, improve the statewide election director association. They would deal with issues unique to North Carolina. Pennsylvania had and might still have a very strong statewide elections association. They have a lot of influence over the state-elected officials. The U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence will never have that influence on our elected officials. Seven, membership in the Alliance will taint the Brunswick County elections and could cause court lawsuits. One of the comments stated why. One of the comments stated wondered why not take something that is free. As the saying goes, nothing is free. It seems to me that between a strong statewide election directors association and local Brunswick talent could provide any assistance the Brunswick Board of Elections and the Elections Office would need. Continued membership will only cause problems with the electorate. Please disassociate with the Alliance. Thanks for allowing me to express my opinion." The next comment is from Sue Cause with the League of Women Voters of the Lower Cape Fear. The comment is, "We moved to Brunswick County in nineteen ninety-five and have watched our county grow and mature over the years. Our county's Board of Elections is one of the brightest lights. Sarah LeVere and her staff exemplify what is great about fair and free elections in our county, state, and country. Their professionalism and efforts make voting a positive experience for all Brunswick County residents is appreciated." The next comment is from Arthur Hill from the Brunswick County Democratic Party. "The Brunswick County Democratic Party is pleased to submit this statement opposing a resolution to bar the Board of Elections from accepting assistance from private organizations. Democrats in Brunswick County are proud of our BOE, which has deservedly received accolades for its performance in conducting fair and open elections. In twenty twenty-two, after a nationwide review, the BOE was recognized by the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence as one of just ten centers for election excellence in the country. It was praised as a leader in safe, secure, and inclusive elections that put voters first. Last month, Sarah LeVere, Brunswick County's Director of Elections, was honored by her peers who elected her President of the North Carolina Association of Directors of Elections. So it's especially offensive a resolution approved by the Brunswick County Commission on March twentieth and supported by the Republican Party falsely impugns the board's integrity and needlessly undermines confidence in elections, all based on a debunked conspiracy theory. The excellent BOE staff and the board's members have worked diligently to oversee fair and open elections in our county. We don't need bodies like the GOP-controlled County Commission and their like at the state and national levels, replacing the sound judgment and experience of the BOE. We must ensure the BOE remains independent of partisan lies and pressures. The accusation is part of the big lie. The resolution suggests, without proof or documentation of any kind, that the funding was partisan and pressures the BOE to withdraw from the Alliance. This fact-free accusation is yet another conspiracy theory accusing Democrats of election meddling. Meddling as it is, as we will show, a local version of falsehood whose basis is rooted in conspiracy theories that emerged from a former president's dishonest declarations he won the twenty twenty election. It represents, in fact, the arrival of the big lie in Brunswick County politics. Politifact debunked the GOP's central argument, noting that if meddling to benefit Democrats was the goal, then it was a strange strategy to provide the money to every single jurisdiction that applied. In a unanimous bipartisan decision, the Federal Election Commission rejected claims that the donations were designed to help Democrats in the twenty twenty election. The FEC found no evidence that the Center for Election Innovation and Research or Mark Zuckerberg and his wife Priscilla Chan committed any wrongdoing. Finally, multiple courts have upheld the grant's lawful benefits of Alliance membership far from some sort of misguided conspiracy theory. The BOE's association with the Alliance and its antecedent, the Center for Tech and Civic Life, have been good for the voters of Brunswick County. The twenty twenty election took place during the worst pandemic in a century. Private money was needed because the federal government hadn't provided enough funding. Congress allocated four hundred million dollars for election services, but that was just a tenth of what an official said was needed. Many elections officials credited the programs with saving the election in twenty twenty as local officials struggled during COVID to maintain adequate staffing and resources, noting that it was essential to prevent an election meltdown. According to Ballotpedia, the CTCL distributed seven million one hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred and sixty-four dollars to North Carolina. To North Carolina, Brunswick County received sixty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars. The Alliance, formed in twenty twenty-two, allows BOE to share best practices and learn from each other. The BOE should continue its Alliance membership because it would otherwise have to replace the private funds with tax dollars or do without. Inadequate funding is the problem. The real problem is not the BOE's association with the Alliance. Rather, it is underfunding by North Carolina's Republican-controlled legislature and Brunswick County's GOP commissioners. In twenty twenty-two, the average American county spent seventeen dollars and ten cents per voter to administer elections. Brunswick County spent seven dollars and eighty-six cents less per voter." That was the last comment on the portal.
All right. Madam Director, this section, uh, this section four, is that concludes the section four? On the agenda?
Public comment?
Please. Okay. Um, with that, uh, including public comments, but in person and, uh, otherwise. We're moving, we've moved on to number five.
Um, Director's Report. I do not have a lot to report today. I thought we would be busy, which we are. I'm happy to see so many people here. Um, I have attached a copy of the March voter registration statistics. Um, as you all are aware, I was sworn in as the President of the North Carolina Association of Directors of Elections. Um, thank you. At, um, at a conference that we helped plan in March in New Bern, it was a lot of work, and it was wonderful to get together with other local election administrators, many of which are new, um, have never been to a conference before, so that was, that was a really great experience. So, um, I'm excited about that. Um, I do want to highlight a few upcoming outreach events. Um, we have a poll worker orientation coming up on April nineteenth. That is an in-person-only session, so it's not offered in person and online. Um, it's from ten to noon in the Commissioners' chambers, so in this room. Um, and then after that, on May eighteenth, we have our Elections Expo. That is the open house where members of the public can drop in. It's open-house style, and all of the members of the staff will be here um, to answer questions, to show the forms, let people touch a voting equipment, mark a ballot, read it into a machine, ask the questions of the people that do the job. Um, so hopefully we'll get some good turnout at that. And that's all I have for Director's Report.
Okay. Um. Oh, business. I don't know six, um, consideration Brunswick County Board of Elections membership, the U.S. Alliance for Election Excellence. I guess that's why we're all here, so. Um. You want to, you need, who needs to set this up, Madam Director?
I, I can open it up, um, just basically outlining why we're here today. Um, we did have discussion about this at our meeting on March twenty-first. The day after the Commissioners passed their resolution on March twentieth, the board decided that they needed more time to study the issue, and so the item was tabled. Um, and so we are here today to, um, consider the resolution introduced, um, by Randy Pelton at that meeting. Um, and I'll let you all take it from there.
Okay. Um, go ahead with that for discussion.
Just, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lewis and I did discuss this at length, uh, on a phone call last Thursday. And, um, I think we agree that our first item of business that we had was recognize the receipt of the resolution from the Com- from the Commissioners. And I'm going to defer to Ms. Clarity because she's our resident member attorney.
Well, um, since we actually accepted it last meeting, it doesn't have to be re.
Okay.
But.
Right, so. Okay. Um. At this point, uh, I'd like to re. We had tabled the, the discussion on the resolution, uh, last week, and I'd like to, uh, bring that up again for discussion at this point. Okay?
I, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So, uh, in our meeting last month, um, I was caught by surprise being presented with a resolution, um, by Randy, requiring us to have a vote to remove ourselves from the U.S. Alliance. Um, this resolution was drafted in response to the Board of, uh, the County Commissioners' resolution the previous evening and encouraging the board to withdraw its membership and terminate any kind of association with the, with the, with the organization. I mean, there, there were some comments in the, in the resolution that I think everybody can agree with, and we've agreed with all day today, you know, including that, you know, integrity of elections is fundamental, and it's on the minds currently in of the residents of Brunswick County, because some of it, the turnout today, we're seeing that. But I just want to bring up that while, you know, we have both sides talking about what the Alliance is, the Alliance itself describes itself as a nonpartisan organization. And it's not, it's not politically partisan as, uh, other other speakers today have stated. Since, since our last meeting, I've received many emails, I'm sure everybody on the board has, from, you know, members of the community voicing their opinions on if we should stay in the Alliance or we should resign from the Alliance. I just want to make a statement about that. Um. Yes, that the private money, which is some, okay, the private money that is referenced in the emails, some of which is funded by a not-for-profit organization and in part by Mark Zuckerberg and his wife. Doesn't, I was told that from many people that, from emails, that they have a sinister motive, a sinister motive for giving money. Well, first of all, I'd like to say that the, our association with the Alliance is not monetary. We're not receiving funding per se for the elections. We, it's for Sarah and the staff to meet with people from other states to see how they run their elections and what works for them or what doesn't work for them. Along with what's in our materials today, you'll see there's a uh, example of the absentee ballot and the envelope. That is something that Sarah got together with people within the organization just to make it clearer and easier for people to vote. I mean, people, if people are not registered to vote, they should absolutely be, be voting. If they are not United States citizens, they should not be voting. I'm a Democrat, and I agree, I totally agree with that. Um, I just don't understand why all of a sudden this came, this came up. Why out of nowhere did our last meeting, we received this, this resolution? I just want to let everyone know that in your package, you'll see that you have a copy of a contract from the U.S. Alliance that was signed. And the second name underneath Sarah is the Assistant Brunswick County Attorney located. So it's not like this came out of, the county knew about this and they approved of it. So I, so for reasons unbeknownst to me, why this all of a sudden became an issue. That's why, um, I, I want to bring this forward. Uh, so just as in closing, I would say, elections here in this county are conducted with transparency and professionalism. I respect all of the members on this board. I have utmost respect for them because we all have the same exact goal. We want our elections to be run fairly. We want every vote counted that should be counted. And if anyone has, in this room, has a problem with the integrity of elections here in Brunswick County, I have a suggestion. Volunteer. Become a poll watcher. Because, um, you know, become a poll watcher. Go to your, your, um, your party. They have poll watchers. I, I mean, that's how I, that's how I became where I'm sitting right now. I was a poll watcher for the Democrats. And I learned how the elections were run, and I would be at every single meeting. So it's not, come to every meeting. We have a meeting once a month. Come, see how we handle things. That's all. Thanks.
Okay.
Chairman.
Yeah, nice week. Yes, sir.
Uh, with regards to Randy's, uh, resolution, and, well, thank you, Randy, very much. I appreciate it. But I make a motion that we, uh, deny or reject that, that, uh, resolution.
You got a motion, Chris, for discussion?
I'd like to make several comments, I guess. One is, there were, there've been a number of comments about us being underfunded. I've been on this board now for twenty years. And I'm not aware of any time the County Commissioners, if not, supported us with essentially everything we've asked for. Is that correct, Sarah?
We get the things we need to run elections. A lot of times, the above and beyond, we, we aren't able to get.
But I've, I've watched over the years, and I've seen other counties, uh, certainly underfund a number of things. They didn't send people to training and things like that, that, uh, I think we, we've always gotten what we really needed to, uh, run our elections. To some extent, it's kind of interesting. We hear it's not broken. Uh, don't fix it. You kind of conclude then, why are we going with somebody else to, uh, get additional input? I, I do think we can continually improve, uh, improve. But I do think we need to be very, very careful about, um, credibility, obviously, with all the people that are here. Uh, there's a great deal of concern about that. I think, uh, one of my, uh, board members the last time made a, um, uh, a good comment, a very interesting comment. Uh, comment was that, uh, this is primarily a Republican issue. I think what we have is that Republicans are very concerned about outside influence that might affect things. And the Democrats, uh, either aren't concerned or hope that the Republicans are correct. Well, I think if we do not, uh, eliminate this, this agreement, we're going to continue to have concerns in Brunswick County about our election and our credibility. Regardless, I, I don't think, uh, our staff or Sarah is ever going to intentionally do anything that's not what they think or we all think is correct. But there will still be that perception. There's enough concern out there now across the country about reliable elections. We don't need to add to it. And that's my.
Okay.
Comment.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I'll submit a couple of comments if I could.
Yeah.
Um. First of all, I've been on this board for ten years. And this audience today is the largest we've had in ten years by a factor of about ten. And we have the League of Women Voters. We have Mr. Smutsky who show up on a regular basis. I would encourage everyone out there to please don't make this the only Board of Elections meeting you ever come to. Especially come in the fall. Come when we're counting and processing absentee by mail ballots. Ms. Clarity, as she mentioned earlier, was an observer in the twenty twenty campaign. She's the only person in this room who sat with all of us until one thirty in the morning the first night we were counting, processing mail-in absentee ballots, and thank you for that. There, there's a number of you folks who have identified yourself as poll workers. Thank you very, very much for your participation. If you have an interest in the interest in the validity of the system and you haven't volunteered in the past, volunteer to be a poll worker. We're always looking for good people. I viewed today as an interesting experience. I kept kind of a stroke count and I might not have the numbers correct, but we're pretty much split 50/50 on either for or against continued association with the alliance. Folks, this is democracy at work. All right. We sat, we listened, we considered all of your opinions. And in a minute, we're going to vote on the resolution that I wrote and presented at last month's meeting. And, uh, we'll see where we go from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Uh, I just got, uh, back to what Mr. Smith said, uh, uh, properly funded. Uh, Madam Director, can you tell me, you submitted a budget this year. Can you tell me the, uh, county commissioners, they sent it back to you and they, did you, can you tell us how much they told you to take out of your budget?
Um, the county administration, I don't believe it's been to the commissioners yet, but the administration sent my budget request back and asked me to remove $350,000 from it.
When, when did you remove it?
Um, some items I'm going to purchase this year. I removed the participation in the national certification and the rest I took out of temp part-time employees, which pays poll workers.
But they, they're going to get hired back because they got to go to work.
Well, they have to go, we have to have.
There's, you can't cut salary, you can't cut postage and you can't cut supplies, ballots and supplies. Okay, that's, that's my only question there, uh, about the, uh, proper funding. And yes, I don't, I don't think any, I don't believe anybody said that, that we were, we were not fully funded by the county commissioners. It's just another struggle sometimes. I believe, uh, it is. Go ahead. Anybody?
No.
I'm fine. Any other comments? Okay, we got a motion. Can you restate the motion?
I mean, the motion is that we, um, reject the proposal presented by Randy, uh, Randy, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And, uh, as a motion, any further discussion? If not, our favorite, favor of rescinding the resolution presented by Mr. Pelton, my favorite, aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose.
No.
That record showed motion passed three, two. And.
All right. Mr. Chairman? I have another motion, I speak to floor.
Go ahead.
Um, I move that the Brunswick County Board of Elections retain its membership in the US Alliance for Election Excellence for the remainder of its membership term.
Okay, I got a motion, any further, I mean, I got a motion, uh.
Repeat it, please.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sure.
Please state it.
Sure. I moved that the Brunswick County Board of Elections retain its membership in the US Alliance for Election Excellence for the remainder of its membership terms, which is one year, if I'm not mistaken.
One year from when?
When it was signed in January of, of this year.
Is that, is that a date that I can get on the record, ma'am? Madam Director?
Uh, January 20, January 6th, 2023. So last page of the agenda.
It's that sound reasonable, chair?
Yes. The date?
Yes.
Um, I, I believe it's a two-year membership.
That was a two, okay, for the remainder.
Well, I, well, we, we remain a member for two years, the current membership. Give me a minute, I'm reading it.
Go ahead.
Well, whatever that term may be, that's like, I said, whatever remaining.
Yes, it's an annual membership dues.
So I'll be.
So it's a yearly.
We have paid, uh, we have paid a membership.
We received a scholarship for the membership.
Okay. All right, we got a motion on the floor, um, uh, open for discussion. In, in discussions?
Nope.
I have nothing additional there.
Okay, I, I, I have to, um, I have to ask this. Mr. Lea, how long have you been on the board of elections? Okay, I, I am employed by the county's board of elections.
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years. How long is the director?
Um, fourteen, so nine years.
Nine years, sorry. Um, okay, let me ask you this. When you, when you entered this relationship with this association, uh, were you aware of any background of relationships to billionaires or Zuckerbucks or, or anything like that? What, what, I think I read in, in, uh, one of these publications that you were there for to, uh, get, uh, information, networking and educational opportunities and that sort of stuff. You were not aware that you were entering anything that had one bit of controversy whatsoever, is that correct?
Well, when I spoke to them about entering and participation before I, I was chosen or decided that I wanted to participate, I made it very clear. I was not interested in receiving grant money for anything for our office needs. I just wanted to learn. I wanted to meet other election administrators and learn. That, that was my primary goal. And then I also think that we do a lot of things well in Brunswick County and sharing some of those best practices with other county offices was another one of my goals.
Okay.
Since, since the pandemic, what kind of opportunities does the state offer you besides sending you down, uh, um, what they call, uh, what do they call them? They call them a memo. That you receive numbered memos, sometimes one or two, or sometimes three a week or something. And that's, that's somebody in the state board, that's somebody at the state.
Yes.
Writing up interpretation of law or policy and sending it back here to you and telling you to, to administer.
Yes. That's correct.
Since pandemic, how much interaction have you had with opportunity to have with other folks in state North Carolina?
Um, in person, very little. We have had.
With your co, your, uh, you remember the North Carolina Association of Directors of Election or something like, sure. Yeah, the directors, y'all have an association, right?
That organization, um, prior to now, uh, meets every two years.
Okay.
Once every two years.
Okay. Um, you, we, we know that the, that the meetings leading up to this, there were people here. Thank you, thank you, uh, Mrs., uh, Houston, uh, Mr. Moore, and of course, uh, Mr. Muskie, uh, for being here. Um, and I, I don't know that ever, um, uh, a light came on and said, maybe we shouldn't. And we had people here from, a lot of people, usually somebody here from the, from the, and we never had any indication that there was a problem with this. I guess, I didn't, and I, and I, on, on, um, on, on November, the, I mean, on, uh, I get it squared away here, uh, on Friday before our meeting, Sarah called me and asked me what be on the agenda. And I said, well, let's get into what y'all, what y'all are doing in Chicago and what y'all are doing as far as this association is concerned. And I get a call from somebody saying, I think maybe they're saying that this thing had become an issue and I didn't know it was an issue. I thought we were just hanging out and then, and then that was Fri- Friday, Saturday. Then Monday, the county commissioners have a meeting, right? They can't, the county commission have a meeting and all of a sudden, these resolutions are flying from the county commissioners' chambers about us getting out of an association, which they knew was they were involved in because the state of North, is not, is not Senate Bill 89. Is that, does that say in something to get, uh, do something with Senate Bill 89 to, to eliminate association with these outside organizations? It's languished on a desk in Raleigh and I think it's Senator, uh, uh, from Lee, Senator Lee from, uh, New Hampshire County. And it is ever since, like, January sometime, they've been tossing this around, but on, on the eight, on the, uh, uh, seven, eight, but then the 20th, they decided they needed to send us a resolution, send us a resolution. Because in his, uh, uh, and Mr., um, whatever, anyhow, he didn't want anything to undermine the integrity of, of our elections. And they want to be disassociated with any kind of organization. How much money, we, we received money for travel, is that correct?
Yes.
How much?
Um, around $2,000.
Okay, and then, and then there was a grant for buying, for other things that came from a big dollar amount that came to North Carolina. We got 67,000.
And that was in 2020, so totally separate from the alliance. That was, that was before the alliance even existed.
Okay, so, so we're rocking along and we, and trust me, we've received no complaints, not even, thank you, Mr. Chairman from the Republican Party that, that just flew under our radar, everybody's radar, nobody. And, and Mr., um, Mr., um, uh, Williams said that, uh, he, he told Port City Daily that he received a few complaints about the alliance membership. And we never received it. Like, I would be much happier if a taxpayer, I mean, if a voter came in and said, we don't like you being associated with the alliance. If a group signed a petition, uh, uh, whoever, whatever party, whatever group signed a petition, said, we got a petition saying you want to get away from the, we don't want y'all to have any association with any outside organization. That never happened. We got a resolution less than 24 hours after the resolution was passed by the county commissioners and told us to get out of an alliance. Now, the only reason that I would be willing to get out of an alliance is because of just what Mr. Williams said here, Commissioner Williams said. Because after this is over, and if I vote to not get, to not get out of an alliance, then people are going to walk out of here, maybe, maybe not, but they're going to walk out here and do just what Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams says. The public perception, perception is reality. And you can spin this thing up and, and, and commit her to, uh, 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 political pawn and this, this board is, is activist and, and all kinds of, uh, wrong activities. I've been on this board 11 years and I've spent 11 years without any problems whatsoever. Trying my best, my dead level best to make sure that there was no controversy surrounding this board. And it hasn't. We, we, somebody said something about convicted felons, convicted felons. We, we get felon voters that before the last ever came along, we get them just about every election. Somebody votes, that's a felon, somebody always happens, we always send them over to DA's office and they do something with them, I don't know what they do with them. Madam Director, would you, would you say you're a forward thinker? I think you are. Do you think you're a forward thinker?
I think so.
I think you are. I think you've established what to do today and you're looking forward to what you're going to do next day. Would you say maybe you saw an opportunity to, to do something that would bring you further into a, into a process?
Yes.
First of all, 99% of the voters in Brunswick County have no clue what we're talking about. This is a monster that's been created. I'm fairly certain, uh, in conclusion, that the county commissioners, they, they decide, they, they approve purchase requisitions. And I'm fairly certain that any future purchase requisition that is submitted to, for membership in any organization like that, I'm sure they're on guard now, but any future, any future association with, with, with an organization like this, they're going to make damn sure that it didn't get, go through the attorney and it doesn't get, it didn't get paid, get, get proven paid. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that our, our, uh, relationship with the, with the alliance is short, is going to be short-lived. Well, it's, uh, for the good or bad, not because, not because it's good or bad organization, just because, uh, they decided that they, they don't want that to be a part of it. Uh, I've said about all I care to say, and, uh, anybody else got any comments? Make a motion with your.
I have a motion on the table.
We got a motion on the table. I think the motion says we stay associated with last, the d- duration of the term of the agreement, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any further discussion? If not, all favor, most of them, I say, aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose?
No.
No, let, let record show the motion passed three, two.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor, Mr. Smith, aye?
They all did.